This is the regular council meeting here in the village of Woodline, July 25th, 2023. Clerk, you can log the official time. All eyes for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father God, right now, we just want to pause and say thank you for allowing us to come here to the village of Woodline once again to do the business of the village. Lord, we ask that you hover our hearts, our minds, that we make the right decisions again for the village of Woodline. We ask that you just enter in each home here in the village of Woodline and touch each heart by a mighty way. Lord, we ask in these blessings in thy son Jesus' name before his sake, amen.
Roll call, please.
Esther Boyd.
Here.
Rosemary Brown.
Present.
Cindy Chandler.
Present.
Pamela Fitzgerald.
Present.
Robert Lawson.
Present.
Aaron Tillman.
Present.
A sir. Mary Poole.
Present.
Very well. All right, reading and disposal of our previous minutes, the regular council meeting from June 27th, 2023. I will need a motion to approve those minutes in front of us with any deletions, additions, corrections to those minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular council meeting from June 27th, 2023.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Bob.
I'm sorry, I'll second.
The motion has been moved and properly seconded, all ayes.
Aye.
Very well. I need a motion to approve this special council meeting from June 30th, 2023, with any corrections, deletions, or additions to those minutes in front of us.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special council meeting minutes on June, that was held on June 30th, 2023.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, all ayes.
Aye.
Very well. Tonight, we have a couple appointments. Interim Chief Williams.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council.
Good evening.
It's a very exciting evening for our department this evening as we welcome our two newest offices, Jordan Shannon and Joshua Hilling. Now, we worked very hard, very tirelessly to acquire both of them. We really think very highly of both of them, and we're very excited to have them as part of our team.
Wonderful.
So.
Well, Mr. Shannon, Mr. Hilling, we're going to do it the right way, with the official way. How about that? Is that okay with you? All right. Clerk, there you go. Thank you.
Mr. Hilling. Hilling, if you have family with you today who want to walk into a fight, tell them, "Oh." You've got big family. It's a village. Mr. Joshua Hilling, Mr. Hilling, can you raise your right hand for me and repeat after me? I say your name, please.
I, Joshua Hilling.
On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always.
I will always.
Have the courage.
Have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I do solemnly swear that I will.
I do solemnly swear that I will.
Uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
Uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The constitutional laws of the state of Ohio.
And the village of Woodline charter.
And the village of Woodline charter.
Bylaws.
Bylaws.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And resolution.
And resolution.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
Without favor or affection.
Without favor or affection.
Malice or ill will.
Malice or ill will.
Until I am rightfully discharged.
Until I am rightfully discharged.
So help me God.
So help me God.
As mayor of the village of Woodline, I appoint you to the position of police officer again here at the village of Woodline. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations again, and welcome to the team.
Congratulations. I love your family. For five minutes. He's looking like, "Come on."
Mr. Shannon, would you be so kind enough to raise that right hand for me and say, "Aye," and say your name, please?
Aye, Jordan Shannon.
On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always.
I will always.
Have the courage.
Have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I do solemnly swear that I will.
I do solemnly swear that I will.
Uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
Uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the village of Woodline charter.
And the village of Woodline charter.
Bylaws.
Bylaws.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And resolution.
And resolution.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
Without favor or affection.
Without favor or affection.
Malice or ill will.
Malice or ill will.
Until I am rightfully discharged.
Until I am rightfully discharged.
So help me God.
So help me God.
As the mayor of the village of Woodline, I appoint you to the position of police officer again here at the village of Woodline. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, ma'am.
I love your family.
All right, very well. Mr. Johnson, I believe that you have something for this council from planning. Can you come forward with that for us tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Planning Commission is making a recommendation to council to make a map amendment.
One moment. Let my friends and their families head out. All right. All right. Mr. Johnson, go ahead and proceed.
Once again, the Planning Commission is making a recommendation to council to make a map amendment change to remove the area between Byron Baron and Terrence from the Springfield Pike overlay. Except for the business facing Springfield Pike, I'm sorry.
I just want to be clear on what that recommendation is. So the Planning Committee is making a recommendation that they remove Baron and Terrace from the Springfield Pike overlay, but it does not include businesses that are facing out on the main street of Springfield Pike. Does anybody have any questions behind that?
I do.
This is not, oh, go ahead.
I need a visual.
Can you? Baron. So if everybody knows where Mr. Lawson's shop is, just south of it, on the same side to the left is Terrace.
Okay.
Baron is the street that actually runs on the first driveway that used to be what we know as Ryan's All Glass. Now, Servall, that is Baron. So that area that is mapped, and the map is included on there.
A sir.
Mr. Johnson.
I think it would benefit all of us to have one, and I, yes.
Yes.
Can I have one?
I have one. And so that's what, that is what we're talking about, Baron and. Yes, it is a recommendation. So what happens, there is a process behind that, I'm sorry?
Why? Was it recommended?
It kind of limits us in terms of what kind of businesses that we could entertain in terms of moving into the village. We have a current business that is wanting to come into the village, but where he wants to go, it kind of spells it out a little bit, but we've had some conversation in planning about removing those two areas because they are not visual from our main street on Springfield Pike, but we're just asking that those two be done.
Excuse me, mayor.
Go ahead. One moment, Ms. Rosemary, yes.
When you're saying areas, we're talking streets to remove the streets?
That area, Baron, Baron and Terrace. So it's really like a block, if that's how you want to look at it, down in that hill, down in there.
May I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The little purple area is, the underlying zoning is IP, which is industrial.
Department.
Right, right, I see that.
But we've done what the zoning deal with overlay Springfield Pike on that, and that's what's being removed, that IP, that industrial area, overlay is being removed.
Oh, okay.
So it goes right back to industrial.
Got you, that makes sense, got it.
Part of that, if I can add to it, mayor, is that the current buildings that are on those streets right now are industrial buildings. They're not made to be the small businesses and shops that were originally thought of as part of the overlay.
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
And since, if you draw it down there, everything's very much down a steep hill. You can't see those from the street.
Correct. Yes.
What happens to the existing buildings that are there, businesses?
They still, they remain. It's industrial, so they remain.
Like the landscaping company.
That doesn't change anything in terms of.
The type of operation?
Yes.
No, it doesn't change.
No, it doesn't change.
It's changing the zoning pretty much.
Yes.
Okay.
Again, this is just a recommendation. There is another process to that where it has to, we have to have a public hearing for that. Again, this is a recommendation. You open that public hearing up. Again, it comes back for a vote to council, but not tonight, that will not happen tonight. Yes, Mr. Johnson?
And how does that benefit Woodline? How does that benefit us, this change?
So the current buildings that are in those areas are industrial buildings, and when the overlay is on that particular area, it limits the use of those buildings to things that really aren't, you know, Springfield Pike overlay was originally imagined for small mom and pop shops, bakeries, restaurants, things of that nature. Those buildings really don't allow for that. They're built to be, you know, storage or landscaping and things like that. So removing that allows those, the type of businesses that would occupy those buildings to allow those businesses now.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Johnson, I thank you so much for coming tonight, and we'll get to that next piece and that process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much as well.
Thank you.
All right. Clerk, has anybody signed up to address council tonight?
Yes.
All right. All right, Mr. and Mrs. Hunter, please come on up.
All right. Good evening, council. We're here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are here to maybe provide and maybe see clarity on how we got to this point. We do an event annually. The last time we did it here in Woodline was September 14th of 2019. That exact date was, would have been our son's 40th birthday, and he was murdered in Woodline on.
Chester.
Chester. I'm so sorry. And there was a proclamation given Cedric Vincent and Erica Farley, the vice mayor. Everybody's on this proclamation. What we were trying to do moving forward was a scholarship event, kind of changing what we've done in the past, a scholarship event that gives some kids, needy kids some money, some scholarship money. So we went to Woodline on the 15th of June. We viewed the application, completed it, initiated all the areas in it, and paid the money that we were told to pay.
When you say Woodline, where did you go?
We went to the Woodline Rec Center. Yes, ma'am, and that's kind of what we were under the impression that we should, I wish we had known we could have. I think that would have cleared up some of what we're experiencing right now, but we got this application, and I thought everything was fine. We got flyers, tickets, put information out there, which is, you know, kind of a part of a, only event, and got some significant momentum, and then yesterday I got a call from Mrs. Sherman.
Sorry about that.
We got a call from Mrs. Sherman from the Rec Center, saying she spoke to Mr. Ingle, and various alarms had come up, and there was a suggestion to cancel our event. It called us so off guard because as I typed, spoke to Mr. Ingle, started calling, trying to figure out what to do. You know, I came to find out a couple of concerns exist. One, there's a memorandum of understanding that's required, I guess. Hadn't heard of it, it's not in the application. And I was hoping to get some clarity on that, is that something that's specific to our event? Is that standard operating procedure? I hadn't heard anything, I'd have been knowing that. With that, certainly. Yes, what I'm saying, it's not on the application. So that's a big concern for us because what we're trying to do, and I say provide and also receive clarity, I think we can move forward, that's up to you. We can be in compliance with what your requests or requirements are, but we certainly need to know those requirements. When we went to the Woodline Recreation Facility, we were in compliance with those things that are mentioned in this application. We got our receipt for the money's paid, and now we find out yesterday that what we paid, which was $460, $65, and my understanding is that was a $150 deposit for each room, but Mr. Farley was so crystal clear in speaking to us, and that's what we visited with our first visit. We set up a second visit to make sure we were on the same page with your leader now, with Mrs. Paul Sherman. So Mr. Farley told us that it was $650 per area, and it was a 10% discount.
Six fifty per area for the deposit.
For the gymnasium, for the auditorium. So it was a $650 total price for each area, so amounting to $19.50, and then there was a 10% discount, I guess, for renting multiple places. So whatever that amounts to was what we were expecting to pay. I don't know where the $460 came from. We were just told that's what was required to put down payment, so we paid. Our understanding is that we were to pay $19.50 minus 10%, what I had suggested, my wife and I suggested, because we were going to give scholarship money away. Our event was scheduled to be two hours over the four-hour window. So what we were asking is, is there a possibility that the village would consider allowing those hours to carry on without an additional charge in exchange for us including Woodline's name on the scholarship? And I stand here today after all this taking place, I'm okay, we're okay with paying every single dime, not even concerning ourselves with that. It was just a thought, but to support the integrity that we're operating under in our little document here, back at the end, when we did our event in 2019, you know, the pandemic came on right after that. I lost my mom to the pandemic, and I know how serious it was, so we shut things down for a few years. We haven't done our events since 2019. We went straight to the Fifth Third Bank in Kroger and opened up an account with scholarship money. And so as I stand here, there's $1,000 in the account that hasn't been touched, that's designated for the event. So no matter how well or poorly the event goes, we're able to give $1,000 away right now. I pray that we'll do significantly more, but I don't want to guarantee something I can guarantee. But we're trying to get an understanding how we got to where we are today with having paid what we were told to pay, $465. We could have paid more than that, we could have paid half, we could have paid all of it if that were the requirement. We had no idea about a memorandum of understanding on our flyer. We talked about the BYOB and cash bar, but if you look at the first page of the application, it says, "Will liquor be served?" I checked yes, and I put under there in the note in parentheses, "If we are permitted to get a temporary license." We've done this at Woodline before, so it's a seamless process. Councilmember Tillman was the chief. He signed off, no problem, on the liquor permit. We sent it upstate, got the permit pretty quickly. So I'm assuming that process has not changed according to the authorities there at the Rec Center, it's the same process. So, and then at the same time, on your document on the application, it clearly says in bold letters, you know, a permit is required if an entity intends to provide, sell, or consume alcoholic beverages at the facility. The applicant is responsible for determining what type of permit is needed. But it says in bold letters, "Under no circumstances will alcohol be permitted if the proper permit is not on file prior to the scheduled event." We have two months before the event's even scheduled to start. We can have the event, I mean, the permit in hand if the chief signs off, because that's all it depends on, because Ohio, the liquor division will absolutely grant it. But if the chief doesn't, we'll shut, we can shut the alcohol down, that's not an issue. So whatever contingencies, requirements exist with Woodline, I feel like if we knew them, we had known them from the beginning, we would have been able to comply with every one of them instead of promoting it from June 15th up until yesterday and finding out we've got some serious hiccups. You know, the insurance, it's mentioned on here about having insurance, but there's no amount required. So since yesterday, I've spoken to major insurance company, our own insurance company, and I'm getting a quote, I've gotten some quotes, million-dollar insurance policy. I don't know if you require more than that.
Ten million.
What's that?
I believe it's ten million.
Okay, so being in compliance is really a non-issue, but I'm praying that we'll have an ample opportunity to be in compliance, not just be called and told, "Hey, your event is canceled," based on stuff that we never knew about. So the four points of concern were the memorandum of understanding, certainly the liquor permit, the insurance coverage and the amount, which we can certainly get. And then that last thing I came to find out through another conversation, that the operating hours may be in question. If those are the hours that we have to, our event, we set seven until 1:00 a.m. If those hours need to be scaled back, I think when people choose to give from their hearts and donate out of love and for a cause that's as good as this one is, I don't think they'd have a major problem if the hours were shifted, you know, from 1:00 a.m. to 12:00 or 11:00, or whatever your facility's requirements are. But we just feel like we stood up here, we're standing here today because we were caught off guard and not knowing. And I had this application, I only had four areas highlighted. I've already spoken about the permit, I've already spoken about the insurance. It says, as it relates to the deposit, all facility rentals require deposit. Deposit must be paid cash, cashier's check, credit card, no personal checks will be accepted. Deposits are due at the time of application. We did exactly that. It makes no mention of an amount of money, I think, in speaking to Mrs. Sherman yesterday, and then I'm giving this, this is second-hand stuff. She says in speaking to Mr. Ingle that it was said that deposit should have been $650. We don't know that, there's no mention of that in here, and we certainly could have afforded to pay $650. As we stand here now, we can afford to pay the whole rental fee, whatever that rental fee is. A $19.50 minus a 10%, and if it's an hour or two over here, we understand it's $100 an hour. We're okay with paying. That, it just seems like we're here for, it feels like all of the wrong reasons, and we're just hoping we can appeal to the council and get things corrected. And then the last thing I had as a bullet point highlighted, where it says cancellations. Mr. Ingle, when speaking to him yesterday, he was saying that the amount of money that we paid was insufficient, and I guess, and you can speak for yourself, Mr. Ingle, it's like it could nullify the whole contract. Well, I don't know how that's fair to us when we pay what we were told to pay, and there's nothing in this contract that speaks of cancellations as it relates to the organization. These cancellations have to do with rent. And so that was a big concern for us. The cancellation information here only applies to the renter, and there's no mention of Woodline administration canceling.
All right, so let me start by saying, one, this is clearly not a councilmatic decision. I want to be very clear and transparent that when we have issues like such, we're going to have to lean on our administration. So I got a wind of this whole scenario. Like, what I'd like to do is, I want to meet tomorrow morning with our interim manager along with our Parks and Recreation Director to understand, how did we get here, right? And to better understand, so it helps me to better understand. But I guess the concern that has been out there is information that is out there, right? And things that we clearly don't, we just don't do in the village of Woodline anymore. As you indicated, you said that this had not happened since 2019. Our processes have changed since 2019, but it does again alarm me, and I have some questions and a concern as to why this information did not get to you. We just had an event where an MOU was written, so I'm not understanding why that happened. But again, what I like to do, Mr. Ingle, is that we will sit down tomorrow with Ms. Sherman, and if we need to get law involved, we'll get Emily on the line with us to have that conversation, to kind of give us some feedback, but that's why I kind of want to start with that, and then that way we will be able to give Mr. Hunter a response. But again, that is not a councilmatic thing, I just want to be clear, that is an administrative thing, okay? So again, I want to have that conversation with them too on tomorrow. Yes, ma'am?
I need some clarification.
Sure.
Saying it's an administrative thing.
Yes.
Is that administrative, you say that administrative thing has nothing to do with council? So is the administrative thing dealing with the Rec Center?
When I say administration, administration. So it all came, it kind of came up when you guys were told that the event was canceled. Is that my, is that correct understanding?
Yes, yes.
So.
I don't know where the administration lies. I don't, it lies here with the village and the council?
The body of council and administration are two different, we're one, but we're separate. We're the law, we're the lawmakers.
Okay.
We're the legislative branch of this village. Administration is the one that carries out the rules, regulation, making sure that those are carried out.
But they're associated with the village, not with the Rec Center?
Well, the Rec Center is the village of Woodline.
I know it's in the village of Woodline, that's who we went to initially.
Right.
There still was a problem with the administration for it, so I'm still.
So when I say administration, I mean my village administrator. Yes. So the rectors are under that administrator.
So should we have gone to him first instead of the Rec Center?
Or, you know, you could say yes and no. I mean, I think that your first spot would have been the recreation. If you're looking to rent something, yes, you probably would have went to the recreation.
But I'm saying.
I think that.
But I'm saying we wanted to rent the facility, so it makes sense to go to the facility.
That is correct.
Rent the facility.
But because of the magnitude that you're talking about, I think that it should have been carried to her direct report. That's what I'm saying.
Can I just add to that two things? Mayor, I would like to be a part of that meeting tomorrow with you, Tim and Ms. Sherman. And secondly, I would like to apologize to the Hunters. For lack of a better term, this is absolutely absurd that you have to come here and try to defend what you did based on what you were told to do. Okay? Yes, there are some processes, internal processes, that are broken, but you shouldn't be paid to, made to pay that debt. That's on us, okay? And moving forward, working with. Um, and moving forward, working with and Mr. Engel is the interim um village administrator. And I know the mayor, there's there's some things that we need to fix internally, but at nev- never one time should it be put back on the earnest of the customer, the resident, okay? And this is something that we have to get together, and we need to get it together quick, fast, and in a hurry. And I will be at the meeting tomorrow.
Again, we're we're going to be meeting tomorrow, so, yes, yes.
But what I was saying, back going Mrs. Chandler's comment is that hopefully we won't be punished for something we were not made aware of. And
I don't like to use the word punishment, Mr. Hunter. I don't. That's that's very strong.
But that's my word. It's a punishment. We've put so much time and money that I that I mentioned. It's in honor of our herd son. So it feels like punishment when we're just trying to give. We're trying to give something back, and so it feels like punishment, especially when we signed the papers on the fifteenth of June, and I get caught off guard with the call. Just happened to answer it yesterday. I'm told it's been canceled. When I spoke in length to Mr. Engel, and he was very professional, kind of calling me back, he did say, you're saying it's 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 separate, it's not a council issue. But he said very clearly, if the council voted on it, that he would object. So I'm confused right there, so I'll just leave that right there and let you guys deal with it. But I I can say this, and I'll get out of your way. It's it was four areas of concern, and I really believe we can beat every one of them. We're certainly okay with memorandum of understanding. That's what is required. We just hope and pray it's not just us in dealing with those kinds of things. You don't know how big our event is going to be or how small, if it turns out to be medium size or small. I don't know how relevant the memorandum of understanding is, but we're still willing to submit to it if that's, you know, ordinance and rule, right? The second one is the liquor permit. We can have a liquor permit if the chief signs off on it. We'll have that a month before the event even starts. In the language, it talks about having it before the event a month, I would guess is plenty, is plenty of time. The third thing is insurance coverage. I've spoken to our homeowner, our homeowner's insurance, our auto insurance. They're telling me they'll give me votes. Or another guy with a major insurance company gave me another quote again. This is all responding to stuff that I just found out yesterday. Imagine had I known it on the fifteenth of September.
Okay.
Fifteenth of June, all of this would have been resolved. And then the last thing are are the hours. Again, we can adjust the hours to be in compliance with what the village of Woodline requires. If that means making hours earlier, we can do that if we choose to pay for extended hours, but stop at the end point that you call a designated, we can pay for those extended hours and stop at that. So those four concerns from the conversations I've had with your authorities in the village, those are the four major concerns that exist, the memorandum, the liquor permit, the insurance coverage, and the closing hours. We can address all of those satisfactorily. Let me just pray.
And with that note, um, I'd like a copy. I don't know, Clerk or Ms. Ponder, if you're able to make a copy of that contract. I'd like to see it. And does anyone else want a copy of the rental agreement? I'd like to see a copy of it.
If we get clarification on that memorandum of understanding, if we get clarification, if that's if that's applies across the board to everybody that rents the facility.
What was your question?
Did we get clarification on the memorandum of understanding, if that applies to anybody that's renting the facility? Is that across the board at every time?
I'm, yeah, I'm the village uh law director. Um, anytime there is an event that is very large in scope or is not, I mean, normally when people rent the recreation center, it's for something for their particular organization, their particular family. You know who's coming. There's a identified number of people who have R S V P'd or are coming to the event. Whenever it is something that is out of the ordinary or where we need to take into consideration, you know, take certain things into consideration that aren't just what would come with a normal rental, we will do a memorandum of understanding. We've done it before for, you know, basketball tournaments and special events over the years, just things that might require some additional terms and conditions. That's that's all.
Is there a set number that applies to that?
No, it's just looking at each particular rental on a case by case basis and then determining, okay, they're going to rent, you know, for for example, for your event, you're looking at renting three large spaces. You're looking at having alcohol involved. You're looking at something that's late in the evening. You're looking at an event that we don't have an identified number of participants attend or attendees coming. Um, you know, I think some members of council learned about it when they saw it on social media. Um, and so it seemed to be something that we needed to look at and make sure that um, we had a good understanding of the event and make sure that all laws were complied with and um that everything was sorted out. So and I'm not even, sorry, I'm not trying to yell. Uh, I'm not even certain that we will absolutely need a memorandum of understanding. I think that decision can be made after your meeting tomorrow. Um, but it would just be something that says, this is what you're going to do, and this is what we're going to do to, for the event.
Well, just for the record, for the social media part, just know that anything that was put on social media was done after the deposit was made and the facility was secured.
And I I do have a question as it relates to the memorandum of understanding. How long has that been in existence?
Um, as long as I've been the law director, and I've been here for eleven years. If it's been, you know, something that's been brought to me, we will discuss what the particular event is and and then make that decision.
Have you ever had to do an M O U when you've had your event?
My next comment, and and I know things have changed. Change is good. Moving in the right direction, that's great. But prior to nineteen, we we did the same exact event in the same exact community, in that same exact facility, and we've never done a memorandum of understanding. I'm not saying we shouldn't and can't. We're in compliance. That's no problem. But again, we've done the identical
I understand.
And and that's never been a point of issue. As a matter of fact, I guess a compromise one year was we had to hire Woodline's uh
Police.
Police officer. We have to pay security.
Yeah, and 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 that's another item that will, you need to be discussed, you know, depending on, you know, the size of your your event. But, you know, just please understand that administration has changed since your last event, both in the Rec Center and within the village.
We do. It's just, again, if we if in hindsight, it's always true, have we known? We probably would have at least called up here, if not come up here.
I have a question.
Thank you, Ms. Ponder.
Um, and then and then at this point, Mr. Tillman, go ahead with your question, because I do
Was the fundamental requirements met by the hunters? I'm hearing everything else, but was the fundamental requirements as to what you needed to do, was that fulfilled based off of what you do on the application?
Yes.
I don't know why we're here.
Yes, yes, sir. I mean, we did have copies of the application, and you look at it.
I'm I'm just not trying to get that out.
Yes, sir.
Was the fundamental requirements met by you off the application?
Yes, sir.
And it seems something else was added on to it.
Yeah, we we don't find out about it.
Seems like something else was added on after you met the application.
So again, I I, my plan again is to meet with Mr. Engel, Ms. Sherman. Like Vice Mayor is, uh, said that she is going to be in attendance uh at that meeting in the morning. And then again, Mr. Engel will give you, uh, Mr. Engel will give you um a follow up.
Is there, is there an anticipated turnaround as to when your decision, when you arrive at your decision? Because we we have to figure out.
Again, Mr. Hunter, I I can't make a decision as the mayor. I I'm a non-voting member on council. Again, this is an administrative thing that comes. I'm bringing this issue to administration.
So should I look to Mr. Engel with that question?
Yeah, Mr. Hunter, I will, I'll give you a call.
Sure, absolutely.
Where we're at in the process.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Thank you, thanks. Thanks, counsel.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry for your loss.
Oh, thank you so much.
Very well.
Thanks.
All right, Clerk. That is, okay. All right, committee reports. Safety Committee, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. Safety Committee met uh June twenty eighth at six thirty. The meeting was called to order at six thirty-three P M. Present was myself, Mr. Lawson, Esther Boyd. Also present was Chief Johnson, Chief Williams, and Sergeant Lawson. Uh, we had a reading of the disposal of the previous minutes, which they were approved all uh in favor. On the agenda, the fire department updates had um the engine, the fire engine, uh, special council meeting on Friday to approve the purchase of the fire truck. Uh, there was some discussion about the job classification for one of the employees, the risk reduction is changing that job description, but the chief is going to look into that. Uh, we worked on, they worked on the standard operating procedures. Uh, they received the new garage door down there at the firehouse. Um, citizen response, he's talked about that fifteen volunteers to utilize for emergency purposes. Uh, the chief talked about touch every door and door hangers. Uh, the Harley-Davidson pig roast, uh, no, been no date set yet, but the fire department's working with Harley-Davidson. C P R is going well. Chief reported that they're number one in this area or in the country with doing the C P R, and that's going well. Smoke detector, smoke detector programs supplied by Red Cross, chief talked about that. There's a new paramedicine program that the chief is trying to do with uh, get that started with nurses, paramedics, and doctors. They're writing a grant for that now, so that's in the process. C P R and first aid for Princeton, uh, paying for the training. And chief talked about, uh, the drones will be at the River Fest this September, Labor Day. We'll be down there representing that and assisting the city with that safety. Firework footage was uh captured by the our drones here, so chief has that. And for any members who want to see that, the fire chief has that footage from the um June T event. Uh, let's see. And that was all for the fire police department. Chief Williams talked about um securing vehicles. We talked about getting that in the uh, in the advanced year for, and we tabled that discussion. We reached out to the, he reached out to the new hires and offered the contingency officer, which you are already aware of. They were here in front of us tonight. Uh, the injured officer that was uh out injured, chief talked about that, but he is back to work tonight. He was here. And that was all for public safety, and the meeting adjourned at seven thirty-one.
Very well. Mr. Tillman, can I might ask, it says something in here, rebranding, order new patches for shirts has received approval.
Yeah, chief had mentioned that he had changed the, uh, I believe it was the patch, outer design of the patch. And Ms. Brown had asked him about the branding, make sure we were in a cohesive understanding with all that was when that happens, before it happens.
Do we have a markup of it?
So is it a, is it a seal? Is it a?
It's the patch on the sleeve.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think what was said was, it's basically the same that we had, it's just enlarged.
Okay.
That's why I was, isn't that, isn't that, um?
I believe so. I'll ask, I think it's just, I'll ask Chief, Chief Williams for a moment.
Yeah, that's it right there.
Yeah. Okay. It's basically the same, it's just, it was just
It's just changed the outline.
Gotcha, okay. No worries. All right. Any questions for Mr. Tillman and Safety? All right, yes?
I said no.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Committee of the whole, July the eleven, twenty twenty-three, Ms. Boyd?
Well, that would be me.
She's next month.
She's next month.
This month.
This month.
Well, yeah.
Coming up. Oh, goodness, I'm trying to finish that.
Oh, that's, that's weird.
The committee of the whole was called to order at six twelve. Members present was Mayor Poole, Ms. Boyd, Mrs. Brown, Ms. Fitzgerald, Mr. Lawson, myself. Uh, Mr. Lawson moved to excuse Ms. Chandler from the meeting. Ms. Fitzgerald seconded, all ayes for that. Uh, also present was Mr. Engel, Finance Director, uh, Chief Johnson, Chief Williams, Paula Sherman, and Victoria Banks. There was a reading and disposal of the minutes from June thirteenth. Ms. Fitzgerald moved to have the minutes uh approved, and it was all ayes, and it was seconded by Mrs. Brown. On the agenda for that night was the village manager's uh update, which is in front of you. Some of the things we talked about was the June T fifteen, uh, June Tenth after action schedule, and it was a discussion on where we're going to have that meeting for July twenty seventh. If that's still on, um, that was tentative at ten A M.
Is that six o'clock, six now, six to one?
Six o'clock on the Thursday.
There was a brief discussion about Harmony Park and the processes, what we're doing with the instruments. Um, Lee Crest and Riddle Road and Chester Road, the road projects, O P W. The loan funding for that is a hundred percent. What was discussed is uh forwarded the loan paperwork to Mr. Engel for his signature, so that should be in process. H R audit, uh, there was discussion of that. There only returned nine respondents back from that. There was some discussion about maybe running that again, or Mr. Engel was going to reach out to them and see what was best for us to do with regards to that. There's a finance meeting on the seventeenth. Mrs. Brown's uh had an issue with something. She seemed to fit.
The questions that were on the H R?
Yeah.
Audit?
Okay, she had a question about the, didn't seem to fit on the H R audit, and they're just going to look into that as well. Lawn and Lee pickup for Ramke, Mr. Engel discussed that. Uh, he's going to get a quote for the residents to one of the waste containers. The Southern Gateway Project was briefly discussed. Um, they're working on the schedule for a second meeting. Timberland and Timberview Drive, um, we still have to finalize the road project on that, and he's working with C T consultants to ask them about the contract. Running Road in Woodstock, the timeline for the construction, it looks like mid-June to early July. Uh, construction equipment, um, we're just waiting on that. Uh, Recreation Department Program Analysis, I believe that's still moving forward. We're waiting on the results of that. Cincinnati Zoo Property Tax Meeting was held here on, um, a couple of weeks ago?
Last week.
Last weekend, the council chambers, and they were, that was open to the public for the Cincinnati Zoo's tax levy. Backhoe, Mr. Uh, Engels brought to our attention that there's going to be a purchase of a backhoe from one of our neighboring communities, and I believe that's going to be moving forward. Review of income tax uh to be placed on the ballot in November. Uh, it was brought to council attention about the little library. Um, that was the putting that little box up throughout the village, and Mr. Engel was going to look in to the cost of those, and all of council was in agreement of that proposal. Police Department, uh, Chief Williams reported, uh, the two new officer had been selected and that they will be in front of us tonight. Chief also talked about the interest in the flock cameras. Uh, he is working with the village manager to determine uh the best use and how we can move forward with that project. It's a capital item. Uh, let's see. Public Works, Mrs. Banks uh reported how well she was doing on the short staff with servicing the village. Um, there was some mention about uh the removal of the receptacles on the light poles on Springfield Pike. Uh, we're going to reach back out to Duke about uh getting those reestablished. There was a concern that Mr. Engel's going to check on that. Parks and Recreation, Ms. Sherman's talked about uh camp vacancies. They're averaging forty-three students daily. Uh, there's a summer feeding program serving a hundred and fifty-six students from June fifth through the thirtieth. The chiller is out at the recreation center. I don't know if it was out, it's still out, but it was out as of this report. Um, that Mrs. Uh, Sherman talked about, there were three hundred and ninety-four pool memberships issued as of today. And the con, the summer concert series is going to start August tenth and run through September fourteenth, starting from six thirty P M. to eight. Fire Department, Chief Johnson, uh, he spoke about the ladder truck that's in order. There was an incident with the ambulance. It was, had a, an accident that was forwarded to the council. He also talked about the Ohio Serve, twenty volunteers, um, working with the community with Mercy Health and Tri-Health on that paramedicine. Grant's still waiting for a Safer and FEMA. They're finishing that up. Fire hydrants and repairs and replacement, chief talked about that. Another new business, we're asked about the new code enforcer, and that's still being uh under discussion or in discussion. And we enter into an executive session, or it was, I requested into an executive session at eight thirty. Uh, we came back out and ended it at eight forty-seven. at eight thirty, uh, we came back out and ended it at eight forty-seven. That's in the report.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any questions for Mr. Tillman and Committee of the whole? All right, having, uh, Finance Committee, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, Ms. Fitzgerald.
Good evening. Um, the Finance Committee met, uh, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three at seven p.m. The meeting was called to order at seven oh six, uh, myself, Esther Boyd, and Cindy Chandler were present, and also present was Mr. Engel, Mr. Willis, Mayor Poole, and Ms. Brown. Um, some of the agenda items included our tax, uh, income tax updated, the village collected seven hundred nine thousand four hundred seventy dollars and fifty-four cents for the month of June. Uh, the tax receipt distribution by fund included the general fund of five hundred sixty-five thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-six cents. Road tax, ninety-two thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. Debt, thirty-three thousand two hundred twenty dollars and thirty-six cents. And capital projects, eighteen thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars and seventy-five cents, which, um, totals to seven hundred nine thousand four seventy-five-four. Um, the road tax fund receipts and disbursements, um, total since the inception of twenty nineteen to current is, uh, three million eight hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents. We've dispersed one million one fifty-nine thirty-five dollars and ninety-five cents so far. Um, I'm, that's pretty much the end of my report, and I'll leave the rest for the finance update, um, talking about more, um, the finance activities of the village.
All right, very well. Any questions for Ms. Fitzgerald? All right, having, um, Municipal Managers' Report.
Sure. All right, just following up on all of the other, uh, committee reports, some of these might be a little repetitive, but we'll try to be brief. Uh, the June teenth, twenty twenty-three after-action meeting again is scheduled for July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at six o'clock p.m. Uh, I did reconfirm Mr. Edwards', uh, availability, he will be in attendance with, uh, anybody else from Call of Play that he doesn't need to, uh, bring with him. Uh, Harmony Park update, the replacement instruments came in yesterday, we have the benches, uh, up as well, um, they contacted Ford Development so they can add the completion of the park to their schedule. Um, also, uh, the monuments that will go in front of the instruments, uh, should be in very soon, and then we also ordered, uh, bronze memorials for the park benches for people that, uh, sponsored those, and if they are on schedule, they should be here at the beginning of next week. So, um, my hope is that everything will be here by the time Ford comes back to install everything, and we can just go ahead and move that, that project forward to completion. Uh, Lee Cress and Redna Terrace and Chester Road, um, again, we've received OPWC funding, uh, for the Lee Cress Road Reconstruction Project, uh, that's an interest-free grant of a million one hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, we've also received OPWC money for the reconstruction of Redna Terrace and Chester Road, uh, the amounts of one million fifty-nine thousand dollars each for the grant as well as the loan. O-HI has also committed a hundred thousand dollars to the improvements related to Redna Terrace and Chester Road. Uh, those projects should both be started next year, and the bidding is advantageous to us. Um, as, uh, Mr. Tillman noted, um, we have signed all the grant agreements and loan agreements for those, for those projects. Uh, the HR audit, as we, as again was noted in the report, uh, the survey response was not exactly what we wanted, uh, contacted the HR, uh, contacted Patty Dunham, and, uh, they went ahead and reopened, uh, the survey, that will close out at the end of this month. Um, my last, uh, conversation with them, we did see a good increase in the number of participants, so, uh, we'll continue to talk with her and make sure we get a good response. Um, I will ask Paula Alexander to discuss the results of the audit and surveys with, uh, the council, and I'd like to do that in August. Uh, lawn leaf pickup with Rumkey, again, I know there's been a lot of issues, uh, with residents about getting yard waste picked up, um, I have, uh, asked our representative from Rumkey for a quote for, uh, yard waste containers, uh, be provided to each of the residents to try to help out with that. Uh, we've also noted in the newsletter how to bundle and package, uh, lawn, uh, rather yard waste, so that Rumkey will pick that up. Our Southern, Southern Gateway Project, the next meeting for the Southern Gateway Project is scheduled for, uh, tomorrow. Uh, be a great, uh, meeting, we could, uh, there could be a lot of great discussion on that project. Just as a reminder again, that, that project's just being paid for by a forty thousand dollar grant from Hamilton County CDPG, so we're getting really happy, uh, with all the support the county gives us. Uh, Timberland and Timberview, uh, been in contact with CT Consultants, uh, about contacting, um, Mount Pleasant Blacktopping, about the issues, uh, with, uh, Timberland and Timberview. They are continuing to try to get in contact with that contractor, I'm also turning the contract as well as the other documents over to the Law Director for her advice, uh, as how to move forward with that. Uh, baseball fields, uh, the village, uh, review has a proposal for team all sports, uh, deal with the field drainage issues. The proposal that they've sent back to us is twenty thousand dollars, we'll consider that, uh, as part of the capital projects budget next year. Ronnie in Woodstock, as of my last email exchange with the Nieman Brothers, uh, the project should be, uh, starting within the next two weeks, um, they have all of their, uh, materials and, uh, just need to go ahead and get that back on their, on their book of business. Uh, Recreation Department Program Analysis, Prose Consulting has constructed the survey, should be sent out to every household in the village, the survey should be ready, to send in about two weeks. Uh, Prose, basically what they'll do is they'll send out about fifteen of them, uh, see what the responses are, when they come back, feel like something isn't worded correctly, or if we need a follow-up question, we can go ahead and, uh, remedy it at that time and send the rest of them out. Uh, as Chief Tillman noted, uh, property tax meeting was held here at the village, was filmed on ICRC TV. The county was very appreciative of the use of the building, they spoke very highly of the village staff that assisted with the setup of the event, and, uh, they hope to have additional events here at, at the village, so, um, always a pleasure to have them here, and again, just appreciate everything they do for us as well. Uh, Chief Tillman already noted the backhoe, uh, that legislation will be on the agenda tonight. Uh, Hamilton County recommended that the village be awarded two hundred thirty-one thousand two hundred dollars in grant funding for the purchase of property on Springfield Pike. Uh, I just spoke with the county this afternoon, and they are finishing up our grant agreement with the prosecutor's office, so it seems that that will go ahead and move forward. Uh, we do have a, um, amendment to the contract, uh, for the purchase of that property to approve tonight, and that will go ahead and, uh, solidify that purchase with each owner. Uh, FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant, the Woodlawn Fire Department was happy to report that they received another, uh, Assistance to Firefighters Grant from FEMA. Uh, total value of this grant is seventy-one thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars. It'll be used to, uh, purchase three automatic chest compression devices along with warranties for each of those, uh, devices. There's a five percent match to the village, which accounts for three thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty cents. Uh, Springfield Pike and Gruninger improvements, uh, again, the village was awarded a million two hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars from Sorta to make improvements to Gruninger Way as well as Springfield Pike, which will include, uh, sidewalks. I met with CT to discuss the project, and reached out to Dan Ferguson from Alway, uh, to insist, to assist in determining right-of-way acquisitions for the sidewalks. Uh, we'll continue to make progress on that project, and I'll keep council informed as to a timeline related, uh, to the request for the bid proposals and the project start date. Salt Park Construction is continuing over at Public Works. Supplies are in for the building, or sorry, the, the supplies for the building are one to two weeks out for delivery, and construction will begin shortly after supplies are available. The construction team was out this week, uh, marking pub, the Public Works area for that construction. Uh, as, as noted, uh, we've submitted all the documents necessary for the fire truck, um, that will, everything's been signed off and sealed, and that should be deliverable within the next, oh, within two years. It's a tough one, but it's even hard to say. Uh, Chief Williams brought up the flock cameras, and I think, uh, Mr. Tillman mentioned those as well. We did receive a quote for those cameras, total cost, uh, of eight cameras to be installed in the village is twenty-nine thousand two hundred dollars for first year, service thereafter is twenty-four thousand dollars per year. As a reminder, the flock system is a security camera system that is integrated with several other law enforcement agencies that include our neighboring, uh, communities. Also, we've already received some interest from our local businesses to add flock cameras to their properties, uh, if the police department purchases the system. So as a reminder, if the business adds cameras to their premises, they can get access to those cameras to RPD, and it just helps added security for our businesses. Uh, we'll consider the flock system as a capital item next year. Also, our village clerk, uh, was sworn as, as a Ford member of the Ohio Municipal Clerks Association, uh, for a three-year term, so, um, again, one law is represented with another state agency.
Congratulations.
Thank you for that as well, Monica. Uh, and then, uh, Mr. Tillman noted that the chillers were not working at the rec, the, uh, armory, the staff over there was able to take a couple of the chillers and make one good one out of them, so we do have Eric, you're speaking over there at the moment. The new chillers, I was informed, are currently in Wisconsin, uh, and they hope to have them delivered soon, uh, so that's our hope. Um, and then, the only other thing I, I do not have on here, um, there's a gentleman that lives at, uh, sixty-four McLean, um, Mr. Uh, Mr. Eyes Off, and, uh, he would like to purchase the property at sixty-two McLean, uh, to add to his property as a side yard.
Okay.
Um, property at sixty-two McLean is about, is, is point one-four acres, so just a shade over a tenth of an acre, or slightly below it, two tenths of an acre, I guess. Um, we did have Deardorff Appraisal Services appraise the property at sixty-two McLean, the appraisal came back at ten thousand dollars. Um, if council would, uh, like to, um, sell the property, uh, to the gentleman, I will work with the Law Director to see that that happens, and this is a small property that, um, has no, you can't build on it, uh, it's not zoned for building, it would legitimately just be a sub yard for him to use. Um, so that was, uh, council's pleasure.
Okay.
Other than that, I do not believe I have anything else in my village managers' report.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Engel in terms of his managers' report?
I, I have one question, I know that, um, the road project at Woodstock and Ronnie, um, were, we've been pushed back due to unforeseen circumstances out of our control, so are we looking that the project will run? What was the total length of that project from the beginning?
Um, I believe it was, it was a couple of months project, it should still be completed before the end of the year, but I will, uh, I'll ask the Nieman Brothers for a, for an updated timeline.
Okay.
And, um, they've been, you know, at the, certainly at the very beginning, obviously, we, we stopped for a minute to wait for supplies, they were really good about speaking to the community about that, and they were good at attending meetings for anybody that wanted to, uh, be updated on the project, so I, I suspect this time will happen as we continue.
Okay.
I will, uh, I'll meet, I'll email them before I leave tonight, and see if we get an update.
Tomorrow's fine, thank you.
All right. Mr. Engel, why don't you just go right on into your Finance Director's Report as well?
Absolutely. Uh, picking up with, uh, where Ms. Fitzgerald left off, uh, appropriations reports were provided to, uh, the Finance Committee. As of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, the village has collected fifty-four percent of the budgeted revenues, extended twenty-nine percent appropriations. Uh, the, as of June thirtieth, or rather, for the month of June, the village collected , uh, two point four million dollars in receipts and dispersed, uh, one million thirty-six thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. The additional receipts in June, uh, included the debt proceeds for the new fire truck came in on June thirtieth. General fund disbursements are higher than total village disbursements, where the, uh, village has dispersed forty-two percent of general fund budgeted expenditures and collected seventy-four percent of total general fund budgeted receipts. Uh, fund balance reports and the bank reconciliation, uh, were provided to, uh, Finance Committee as well as the overtime report and salary expense report. Uh, we briefly reviewed, um, recreations, receipts and disbursements, uh, as well as a brief mayor's court analysis. All proposed legislation discussed at Finance Committee will be on the agenda for tonight. Uh, and then in closing, I would just, if there are no questions, I would just ask for the approval of the bank reconciliation receipt listing and payment listing.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
I need a motion for the approval of the bank reconciliation, receipts listing, and payment listing.
I'll make a motion. You two approve that?
Second.
Motion been moved and properly.
Who seconded?
She did.
No.
You asked for the motion, she made your motion, you seconded.
I can.
You can.
Second.
No worries. All right, motion been moved and properly seconded, all ayes?
Aye.
Very well. Law Director's Report.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
All right, very well. I got a couple of things that I just want to, um, highlight, um, one, number one, um, it was in the managers' report, but I do wanna continue to talk about Metro Now, the services that it does bring to the village, to residents. Know what Metro Now is, Metro Now is actually, they, it's a service where you call them, they come directly to your door, to your driveway, pick you up. Uh, me and the Vice Mayor, we, we still planning to do this Metro Now ride, but we just haven't done it yet, but we are planning to do it, just to experience it and so we can really understand that service. Um, Hamilton County Commissioners, we talked about that in, in the report, Mr. Tillman talked about it as well, Hamilton County Commissioners was here in our chambers, um, talking about the zoo tax levy, they're the ones that put the zoo tax levies on, um, so they had a public hearing here in our council chambers, um, last week. Last week, they were here in the chambers, um, I just want everybody to know that we do get feedback, I get feedback about the commissioners and their experience here in the village of Woodline. Um, I even got that when I spoke with, uh, Alicia Reese, Chief of Staff, on Saturday at the event, um, they're excited about coming into our chambers, it's an open air, it's always welcoming, um, so it makes me feel good that we, we, again, opened our doors with open arms, our staff just, whatever they needed to do that night, they had some issues they did, um, but you should've seen Tim just moving around, trying to make it happen for them, so, uh, kudos to our staff to, uh, reach out to our commissioners, um, certainly, those are the folk that, uh, we wanna be nice to. Um, so again, we, we just welcome them at any time, I, I told them that any time that they want to come and have a meeting out here in Woodline, uh, reach out, make it happen, so I, I'm, um, very happy about that. And as I heard, and I, and I put that in my notes to mention tonight, kudos to our village clerk, she went to a training on last week, um, and she, um, has taken a leadership role in, in that organization, so again, to you, kudos to Monica Yahad, who was our Cloaker of Council, make sure that we're on point, keep me on point, so, kudos to you, clerk, um, uh, making your smart, uh, making yourself smart out there, that's what it's all about, just learning and growing, so, we're just excited that we're, we're in a position where we can offer that to you, so, continue to do the good things that you're doing out there, again, kudos to you, um, and all that you're doing out there, so, again, great job, great job, you're welcome, you're very welcome. So that's all I have, I do wanna mention that we're a little stretched out there, we got about three weeks till our wonderful babies are coming back to school, uh, the buses will be rolling through, um, so when you see those buses here the next couple weeks, that's kinda like an indication to you that school is on its way. Um, this is an opportunity for the buses to learn their routes, so that's what they're doing in the streets when you see them, they're learning the different routes, where they pick up the students at, but again, I'm saying this so we are being mindful of our safety in the streets here, the speeding, all of that good stuff, um, so it's just to keep it on the radar, so, I, I always like to bring that up about the safety of our students and our babies here in the community. So that's all I have.
Mayor, I have.
Yes, ma'am.
Were you finished with your report? Okay, um, are we at the time where we need to make a motion for the mayor's court reconciliation?
Um, I'm there too.
Okay.
Yeah. That's where I'm at.
Okay, all right, we're, we're right on the same page.
We are.
All right, I would like to, okay, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the, um, the, uh, mayor's court monthly statement for the month of June in the amount of seven thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Asking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's court monthly statement of seven thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
The motion is moved and properly seconded, um, all ayes?
Aye.
Very well, thank you. Legislation?
Yes, Mayor, the first item.
One more, Ms. Brown did that?
No, I just, I.
Oh, okay, I thought I heard you. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, okay, okay.
It's okay. The first item is, uh, a second reading of Ordinance Number Twenty, Twenty, Twenty-three, and Ordinance Amending Sections Three Point Zero Two, Three Point Zero Four B, and Five Point Zero Three E of the Village of Woodlawn Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual and declaring an emergency. This was one from last month?
Which was a first reading, and it goes to a second reading.
Yeah, let me see.
So again, this is, uh, Ordinance Number Twenty, Twenty-three. So again, this is ordinance number twenty twenty-three. I need a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number twenty, 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 twenty-three.
Ordinance number twenty, okay.
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Emily, but could you read that again? I always thought it was here.
No worries.
Not in the packet, I'm sorry.
It's an ordinance amending sections three point zero two, three point zero four B and five point zero three E of the Village of Woodlawn Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual and declaring an emergency. Just for council's benefit, section three point oh two of the manual deals with the employment of related persons within the village. Section three point zero four B of the Village Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual deals with the probationary period for village employees. And section five point zero three E deals with the use of sick leave for the village. The changes to three point zero two would clarify the village's policy on the employment of relatives to be a little bit more encompassing. Three point zero four dealing with the probationary period would, does two things. One, it extends the probationary period for firefighters from six months to one year, same as police. And also clarifies that the removal from someone from probationary status to regular status requires an affirmative act by their department head to remove them from probation. So it's not just merely the passage of time, it is actually, the time has gone by and the employee has accomplished the goals and met the criteria for a removal from the probationary period. And then the change to the sick leave policy would, it would help reduce the risk of sick leave abuse. And it would require an employee to have a medical excuse if they have more than three consecutive sick leave experiences or three leaves within one calendar quarter. Because what you see is people, you know.
Well, that's kind of there now.
Well, right now, it's only the number of days, the, the, so many incidents within one quarter is not part of the policy and that would be added to it.
Okay.
Was there a motion?
No, there's, so council can either put this to a third reading or you can suspend the rules and adopt it tonight.
I think. I need a motion to declare, I, I need a motion to suspend the rules of ordinance number twenty, twenty, twenty-three.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules of ordinance, ordinance number twenty, twenty, twenty-three. Twenty, twenty, twenty-three.
All right, motion been moving properly, second on the suspension. Roll call, please.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Kamla Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman III?
Aye.
I need a motion for passage of ordinance number twenty, twenty, twenty-three.
I'll make a motion for passage for ordinance number twenty, twenty, twenty-three.
Motion been moving properly, second. Roll call on the passage, please.
Esther Boyd?
Yes.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Kamla Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman III?
Aye.
Well, I need a motion declaring an emergency to ordinance number twenty, twenty, twenty-three.
I'd like to motion, I'd like to make a motion to declare the ordinance number twenty, twenty, twenty-three an emergency.
I'll second.
Motion been moving properly, second on the emergency. Roll call, please.
Esther Boyd?
Yes.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Kamla Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman III?
Aye.
The next item is ordinance number twenty-five, twenty twenty-three. An ordinance to advance up to twenty-six thousand dollars from the general fund to the pool fund.
I need a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number twenty-five, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number twenty-five, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion been moving properly, second. Roll call on the suspension, please.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye. And I would just like to note that those funds will be advanced back to the general fund once the payment has been received from Hamilton County.
Yes.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Kamla Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman III?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Yes.
Very well. I need a motion for passage of ordinance number twenty-five, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion for passage for ordinance number twenty-five, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion been moving properly, second on the passage of ordinance twenty, twenty, twenty-three. Roll call, please.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Kamla Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman III?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Very well.
The next item is resolution number twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the interim municipal manager to enter into a revised purchase and sale agreement to acquire certain property in the village of Woodlawn.
Right. I need a motion for passage of resolution number twenty-six, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion for passage of resolution number twenty-six, twenty twenty-three.
I'll, go ahead, Ms. Brown.
I'll second.
Motion been moving and properly, second. Roll call.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Kamla Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman III?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Yes.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
The last item is resolution number twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the interim municipal manager to purchase certain equipment for the public works department from the city of Wyoming.
I need a motion for passage of resolution number twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion for passage of resolution number twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion been moving properly, second. Roll call.
Kamla Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman III?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Aye.
Very well.
That's it?
All right.
It's yours.
Doing good, Mayor. You're doing good.
All right, is there any new business that comes before this council? All right. I do need a motion to go into an executive decision under section two, twenty point zero one, section G one, for the appointment of a public employee as well as discipline of a public employee.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session under the rule stated per Mayor Poole.
I'll second. Can you say that again, Mayor? I got two twenty before.
Two twenty, zero one, G one, to discuss the appointment of a public employee and the discipline of a public employee.
Motion been moved and properly, second.
Motion.
Pam seconded.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Kamla Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman III?
Aye.
So he can break down.
Okay.
Can we go across the hall because he wants to break down?